Rick Dory.
Hello.
Don Matice. Uh, Jim King. I believe this is Jim online.
Jim's on.
I think so.
Agreed.
I shouldn't write that down.
Not even on the, we're like the big boys.
Jim, are you present?
Moving along.
Okay, sorry. Uh, Aaron Chase. Greg Stewart. Betty Harris Howard. Absent Jamie Wolf. Absent and Brent McCarthy had indicated he would not be able to be present tonight, so Betty, Betty, Jamie and Jim may come, and I do believe that's Jim's phone number. I changed it to his name there, but I'm probably should have done that till I was 100% certain. I can think I'll go ahead and change that back.
Okay, next is a minutes from our August 10.
Mr. Chairman. I would just like to ask that since the board didn't have time to review these in advance, I know you and I did, but the members didn't probably. I really want these to be looked at closely. Yes, please. So you might wanna be take that off another night depending on your comfort level.
Can you send us when you voted somewhere? I'd like to spare it's written. I see.
I will do that.
So we're not acting on the minutes tonight. We're moving on another board base 24018. Stanley Road. Thomas Chute.
Yeah, you're on the floor. I don't believe it. Um, I developed some lots, uh, show progress on the standing road. Uh, about 20 years ago, I built some duplexes. And I decided to sell a couple of them and uh, I've been under contract and as I was walking in a section property lines. I doing some little head scratching as to the parking lot between five and six. So I set my surveyor there and in fact, the property line was four feet from the building on lot six. So I had to move it approximately 20 feet, which encompasses the lawn areas that's there, which brings both lot compliance. There's a tent upset that or go into this zone. It'd be that was why I tell guys. Um, so that's what I'd like to do is have the plan amended so that I can move forward and sell the properties to uh, these two young gentlemen and uh, have it be in compliance.
Okay, question.
I had a question, um, just when you when they gave you the DOT right away, that's now I'm gonna put it on two different properties.
It wasn't anything I was given. It was something I shared. It may have something to do with drainage. I'm not sure really what if you've contacted or in um, interacted with a title attorney just to make sure that that's gonna be approved. It is approved. The only thing I need is to move this property line. Actually, these two, they would have closed without my changing it. Of good conscience, I saw and make sure that I was selling some good marketable to both parties. Because there's no issue with, you don't have to go get DOT's approval. I mean, that even on no multiple properties or anything because you're not changing it. Just because that was really my concern. Yeah.
Dawn? No? Jamie? No, Jamie, you're present.
Okay.
Dawn, did you have any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have any questions.
And now do we have to do the complete thing on this? So this is for most. Dawn.
You should do the completeness, um, motion, please.
So I don't think a motion, if the allegations complete.
Can I just ask a question because this is only one modification though, a subdivision. Do we? I know we had this question. I just want to double check. You do not need to pull the subdivision, uh, old subdivision plans a second time. Right? We could just modify this line. The lots are gonna still be compliant. Everything else is compliant, so we don't need to approve the entire subdivision a second time.
Correct. That's my understanding and practice to date.
That's what we've been doing. I know we did that, but I know that question came up a couple of last time. I just wanted to double check and see if we had any more insight. If we had to reapprove all of the plans or for good business.
I believe this is applicable.
All again, a motion or it being, application being completed.
I'll make a motion that's the, it's completely is complete.
Second, Aaron Shubman's discussion. All favor. Okay, now we move on to accepting the change. I'll take a motion to do the. Show.
I guess we'd like to remind you public if you could see if there's any public.
We have plan. No, okay. Now I'll give a motion.
I will make a motion that is base number 2418 dash one, uh, five, seven, five, and five, eight times Stanley Road. Nine lots, zero, two, nine, dash, A, zero, five, and A, six. Thomas Cho's subdivision amendment, boundary line adjustments to the point one, one acres from lot A, zero, five to lot A, zero, six. Uh, to address the setback violations of the existing structure be approved.
Your second?
I'll say it.
Discussion. During, all favor. Vote. Jim on? No.
I'd like to confirm. I believe it is him. But he's not unmuted himself. Yeah, uh, I don't anymore.
Participants.
That doesn't look like him, to be honest. Usually his comes up an actual number.
It was, and I changed it to Jim. I went see if I put him in the waiting room and then. Shoot.
No. Okay. I say all favor, got that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Um, now the other question that begs to, you know, ask is, is there enough here for court to sign the amendment? There is. I guess it's to Dawn and asking. I was hoping to get the, uh, the plan signed so I could run it to the registry personally in the morning. And I'm gonna give it to the attorneys and you have a better, we're in China, right? We only have four, right?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Excellent. Excellent.
I will get a Sharpie.
Yeah, it used to be a wireless, yeah, it's just black. Sharpie, I like that. What's that?
Uh-huh.
Uh, I gave it to Dawn, so she's gonna do it. Okay.
Have a seat.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. It was a show.
What's that?
It was a show.
No, but they started sports this week.
Well, they always, they started a couple of weeks ago, depending on which sport.
I got flag football and I've got soccer right now.
This is like the first year in 20 seven years that we have not had to worry about when school started.
Wow.
How many years?
Twenty-seven. They got two boys and you know, from when they were in preschool, they'll just the second one just graduated from college. So it's like, we didn't even have to care this year. I didn't have to look at the calendar. Doesn't have anybody around. No, I just didn't even really think about it. I just, I was, I was in Connecticut the last three days. And I just was constantly hearing it on the news, all these schools starting up and I'm like, I didn't even think about it.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of mean, a lot of mean schools started already, but we don't start until the day after Labor Day.
Well, we don't.
Yeah, thankfully, let it be in America.
Some unusual access.
It's nice to have a free day. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be.
And then the other, utter chaos will begin. This is just like pre-chaos, like a couple of sports practices, breaking it in, getting the backpacks ready next week. It's
Yeah, see.
And I'm going away for work on Thursday, my boy must be.
Six day in a week.
It's what?
It's exhausting.
Yeah.
Middle school, we went out, we went to such five days a week and engaged on Saturday. We weren't.
Yep.
They said middle school was always capped at five. So if you had.
My practice is in game.
Right, but if you had games on Saturday, you couldn't practice on Monday.
Oh, wow. No, they're serious.
Well, no, that was a main principal situation.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I don't know. Winter football is pretty serious stuff. I got a whole packet today.
It's main principal situation. It wasn't me. It was, I, when I was told by the athletic director. And he said, no, if you, if you have a match or a game on Saturday, you can't have practice on Monday. So it's only five days.
Flag football is only twice a week practice than a game.
And they have to be done.
Yeah.
There are a lot of requirements. Like golf was weird because it took the middle schools. They would only play till, I think it was six o'clock. And you had to be done. So the kids had played like one through five, like, okay.
That's it. Pack it up.
So yeah, well, yeah.
That's funny. So could we all come and sign?
Yes, we will. All right.
Oh, subdivision.
It will be. I, uh, they painted my office. Everything was pulled up this morning, the whole way in. So there is another one.
Oh, could I ask you a question? Why is it that I had to do that?
You know, I had a question at the last meeting, but they hadn't held it one. They were up there.
Okay. You see, I was, I was a register. And they, I mean, I had to. Could you not? I feel a leisure sometimes. So you're questioning you too. Fine. I said, I want to bring it to you. Okay. No, you don't understand. Oh, it's like, oh, yeah, it's like, you go back to Connecticut. Yeah. There's Monday.
Must have been happy to cross the br- the bridge there. I always love that. I'm like, oh, thank you.
Well, we still, still, there's still a ways to go from there.
Yes. My work just asked me if I could start coming once a month and I was like, no. No. New Jersey. I work remotely though. I just usually go like maybe once every three months. But.
You're gonna be getting so many companies that are changing it. You're doing this fun.
Do, oh, yeah. They, go fly me. Go fly me, but it's such a pain to find rides to get to the airport and.
If you haven't been changed the lot for federal government reach, you have, and I learned from you.
In person?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, for everybody.
Mine's a very odd scenario. Mine's not a normal.
Across the board, you know, well, Ed Dinhell had all those layoffs. You know why they did that? They have like 14,000 people. They've already started hiring back. They have been avoiding over 8,000, I think, job openings. But it's entirely, entirely because they didn't want people to be employed. Those job openings are out. So they said, we're gonna fire you. And now you can go, you got to drive, because the remote's on the table.
Oh, really?
Yeah, well, and they, and they are paying them a little bit less, so.
We'll see what happens.
My question was, so you're gonna lose your job, but this job opens, it looks just like your job. And pay less. Well.
Those people will be moving to private sector.
Yeah. Yeah, well, and it's, it's really, it's, we, it really was me down with the challenges and social.
Yeah, if, if you're not self-motivated, working from home doesn't work. Can I tell you something, Greg? I've considered a second full-time job working remotely. I can do it. Why not?
Three full-time salaries and he just did it for, he did it, just couldn't tell anybody. Because he was doing a remote.
And you get.
He did.
Unless you work two full sets of hours, right?
Considered it. I have time in between. I'm ready to book.
We talked.
Still not know about it.
Did you get the role?
I did. So I got the roll call. We delayed the minutes and then the action.
If you look at ID three, which is a management ground review. That's from this August end.
If there's. Yes.
Potential fourteen days.
Yes.
Alright, moving on. We're now in a workshop. A lot of something I'm trying to go down and go on a workshop.
No, I think workshop is appropriate now. I'm sorry. I, I just wish I could, um, know if that was Jim, I've what happened was, let me see if I have his phone number. He, there was a phone number came in and I said, I think I recognize that phone number. So I changed it to Jim King, but now no one's responding and I'm not certain if that's him or not. Let me just see if I have his phone number and oh, he's got his hand raised. Why can't I unmute him?
Hi there. I was muted on the, on the, on the host end, not on my end.
Can hear you now, Jim.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, alright. No, it was muted. It was yeah, it was muted on the host computer.
Okay, it's purely unmuted, right?
Pardon?
I must have done that.
Yeah, okay. Alright, next we're gonna talk about the workshop. Dawn, you want?
Yeah.
I do. So you have the table of uses and definitions in front of you. And those are the existing, that's the existing document. So at the last meeting, you approved a number of changes and forwarded it to be noticed for public hearing. That is not included in, in what you have in front of you. And Dawn just requested that I send that to you so you can review the minutes against that document. So I did integrate all of those changes. So when you look at the minutes, if you just want to confirm that it all looks, um, appropriate.
Ones we did last time on this being their change, their change.
Yes.
Well, in the draft, I'll be drafting a minute. All changes are here. All the changes we did last time.
Correct. So I'll send you that document for the next meeting. So those minutes should match the changes that I've made. And if they're not matched, then I've made an error.
Um, just by survey, it says they.
They won't.
You didn't mind it? Thomas running to the surveyor.
Yeah, let me open the door for you and, um, because it's locked. You want to use this little thing to swipe it and okay, be careful.
I don't know what that means, but.
Okay.
So anything we change tonight, then you'll incorporate it before we send that to.
Depending on what you want to do, I can add that to it because Deb's back now and, um, she'll help me post it. Um, we could add it to that, or you can move it as, forward as a separate batch of changes. It's, thank you.
Just thinking, I'll be, if it's gonna get done pretty soon, it'd be worthwhile. So we've got everything to date.
I hear you.
But either way, it was bad.
So.
Do you want to help us first? Do you have your issues?
Well, so the definitions, I'm, I want to I'm gonna tell you the things that are, I've highlighted as things that I really want to get feedback on you for is um, looking at the use, the definition for commercial, commercial use currently, which is low, medium and high. And there are some things that we can pull out of that and add to the table of uses where they're currently permitted as low, medium, high, as a specific use. So where restaurant is listed or nursing home is listed. Um, so I've, I've marked up some changes here in this document, which is on both sides of you there to the existing definition. So I'm just gonna go to the beginning. Um, so I'd like to look at that. Um, I'd like to talk about, uh, sober houses. And I've got a few different definitions potentially in here. And the, the question is gonna be there. Do you, is that something you want to adopt, define separately currently? We said, well, it's similar to a nursing home or convalescent use. Because the low impact definition lists those as permitted uses or similar use. So do you actually want to have that as a separate definition? And then determine where that would go, whether it would be as it is existentially stating in low impact use, um, locations or whatever else it may be that you decide. Um.
So you guys, voices here, right?
Yeah, so I was just gonna go down through it, but I, the, the things that I really want to make sure I get feedback on are, would you like, so when we go through the uses, that is not defined currently, but because it's come in more recently and there's been, um, interest in what that is and where it's allowed, do you want to have a conversation pertaining to, and I'll scroll down a little bit here so you can see. I've got a couple of different uses here, uh, definitions here, and then some down further um, that you can look at, but you would probably want to chew on that some more, maybe before you would make a, a decision, but ultimately is that something that you believe is a separate use than what was currently categorized under? Do you feel comfortable with what is there? And if we do define it, I, I have a couple of examples which you could use, or you could ask for something completely different. So do you feel that is a different use than what we have currently listed in the ordinance? So we listed, the ordinance, let me just scroll down a little bit. That might be easier.
And it's really not a question if we define it. It to me is a question. Regulating. It's gonna be regulated like a nursing home. Why do we care? It's already in that definition anyways. We're just gonna apply it that we're gonna apply it. If we wanna, if we want to apply it differently, then we want to define it.
And are we allowed to apply it differently?
Sure.
I don't, are we?
Sure. We might have to go to the town council, but if we wanted to say, okay, the uses are different, we'd have, we'd make a request to make those uses different. I'm not sure, you know, it's, you know, what's the parking requirements? The things that nursing homes are required to have. Were, what do you want to change if you want to change anything? You know, can they not be in a certain zone? Can they not, can they, do they need assistant parking? Do they need a fence? Do they need to have floodlights? Do they need to have warning for the neighbors? Whatever you could think of, if we wanted to add that, we could add that to the ordinance. We just would, no different than writing a new ordinance.
I just wasn't sure what the state mandates, like you're not allowed to say that you can do, but that'd be something we.
Yeah, there's probably, I'm sure the state has definitions for those, but the bottom line, do we want to change it? You know, right now it's locked in with a nursing home. We kind of had to first figures that definition out. That's where it landed. I'm okay with leaving it unless somebody wants to change it. The nursing home definition could be used and we applied those standards. If that's what we're all comfortable doing, if somebody wants to apply a different standard, wants to change that, then I would say we need to define it. If not, why would we spend the time defining? We would just say it's already listed in the nursing home and it's already there. See the kind of circular logic there? It's really only if we want to change how we're going to govern it. That's it.
And we, we aren't gonna have any say in how it's organized, the number of staff, uh, that's all done by the state.
I would assume so, yeah.
So maybe just kind of hit, my thought would be hands off that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure. And, and anytime we could not restate those here, I think that's a good thing in our work. Just because it makes it longer. We're just gonna copy paste.
I feel like it's, it's a similar, it's a similar thing to your senior convalescent. But those don't those don't leave any impact on our community.
Well, if I may.
Like, like if, if you have a nursing home and you have a, a a dementia week. Be concerning. A lot, like high traffic road or something.
Right.
Or whatever, like that, that would be concerning the area. This is, it's a medical facility, not the people. Regardless of vacation.
That's my concern. That's why I was asking it. We proved that one, but I, I'm concerned that they take people in it basically off the street. They haven't even been to detox. That, that's what concerned me, but I don't know that we can tell them and they gotta go to fully the detox program before you take a minute for a place to stay. Basically, that's what they're doing here is.
By definition, okay. By definition.
If we make the definition and say they have to be clean and so we're, they have to.
Can we say that, though?
Maybe we'd have to, that would.
Or is that discrimination?
It may end up on the attorney, but you know, like Joel said, when he came here, we have to be very careful not to exclude any uses entirely, because that's something we get in trouble for.
Yeah.
You know, because they're saying you're not allowing it in the town, but there's nothing to say that we can't put restrictions in the town. Okay, it's gotta be a thousand feet away from the road. It has to be X number of feet. And you might have to say, we, you have to keep patients that haven't gone through detox in a separate wing of patients that have gone through detox. There's things we could probably say that would govern how they would mandate it operate. And there's really nothing to say that we couldn't do that as long as we're not, we can't disallow use. That's, that's the big thing. But we can put rules in place that we say we, we think are appropriate, but do we want to get that restrictive?
I think it's worth.
That's, we gotta be careful. We don't cross that line.
Right.
And, and kind of, and start all of a sudden saying, we're gonna be more restrictive than the state. The state already has all these rules and guidelines in place, which I'm sure are pretty good. I, so I would be surprised if, and that's why I said, but if we want to make our own restrictions, then we want to define it and we want to be able to say, okay, we're gonna put additional restrictions on. And, and if people want to define it just so it's defined.
In case we do it.
And it's regulated the same as a nursing home.
Yeah.
Then that's fine too. But now we've made the definition and said, if this comes up, it's going to fall under nursing home for the regulation side. But we've defined it in the definitions to say it's regulated under the nursing facility, so they don't get to pick. And then we have to sort it out. It's just directly defined in there.
And I think a big piece of this, I following just what you're saying, is if you think they're the same, I think you should still define them and then allow them as permitted uses in different districts. And are, should they be allowed all in the same district? If it's the same as a nursing home, wherever nursing homes are permitted, they should be permitted. Or if they're two different uses, you look at the districts and say here's appropriate and here's not, based, you know, based on what the potential impacts could be, the compatibility with the neighborhood. So there's you, you gotta look at, if you wanted to find it, what that definition is and where would it be permitted?
Well, I think, i- in my opinion, I think, one, we should look into what's required by the state because we don't even know that. Maybe that's enough. I think defining it's not a problem now, and then we can always come back once we look into it. And if there's something we want to update and change, do it then. Because we don't want to wait and do all that and not have this go to town council, right? Like, what's the all the work we just did? Get that out and going.
I think Jim was just raising his hand.
Jim?
Uh, he, it ha- it was up.
Jim, you have a question? Congress. Jim? You have any, Jim?
It may have been an accident.
Okay, so if this, young for a little sharing, one, two, three, shut up.
Define it separately.
Define it.
Define.
I mean, I would motion that. I think it makes sense.
To define it separately?
Yeah, just for the definition, maybe not change.
I guess again, my concern.
In case anybody questions it down the road.
The state was doing a good job, but based on what I heard at that meeting. I don't know if they are, if, if they're allowing people house people and residential neighborhood. That basically just for some reason have decided they're gonna get clean. Uh, I have a little problem with that. With, with the staffing, they said that they don't even, really, they got trained in council. But, uh, it sounded like it was for online training type of, I don't know if that qualify them to administer a detox program, or maybe they go somewhere else and do that after they get in. Kind of sounded like this is a residential thing that they can come there and live. I didn't really get a good feeling that there was gonna be a lot of treatment there. Maybe they go somewhere else for that.
Maybe just counseling or therapy.
Yeah, and then come back there to the place to stay and eat and stuff. I don't know.
And they definitely, like Aaron's just said, they didn't have 24 hour monitoring.
No.
It wasn't, it's not a I want to call it, you know, a prison, but let's call it a, you know, an observate, you know, 24 hour secure, secure facility. Yeah, it wasn't, it was not a secure facility and they weren't trying to make it one.
I've heard of somebody that lives behind there and they have children and they were very concerned about. Transient folk coming and going constantly and their kids being there and.
I would be doing.
Yeah.
So I mean.
Just to.
But that's something to, you know. That, that's something we just say, you know, does it need to have a certain bumper distance? A distance away from.
Right, from house, yeah.
From other.
And that, and that's, that's, I just also want to say, I'm not saying that as like, anybody with addiction issues. I'm saying just in general, different people that you don't know, coming and going that closely to anybody's children would make me paranoid. It's not like a neighbor that you get to know that lives next to you, it's constantly transient.
One of the things that, you know, we have is we, we allow that public info and, you know, number thirteen on our warnings for conditional use. We have the authority to say yes or no. If somebody comes in and they're worried about that and they live nearby. So we can take that into account, um, one will kind of.
Sign in again.
Next, we're going down that road. So, and I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just saying, you know, and would there be a way, that would be, I guess, the second question is, would there be a way? To. To lessen those concerns if we pick the zone. You know, do we put it just because industrial commercial? It can't be in residential, it can't be in, in any of the other zones. It's that.
Or not in village.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Close corners.
I think it's a village, but, but we can eliminate it from residential and just say, we can leave it as. Let's hold it done through and, uh, roll. And then rural, we would have to evaluate.
I would think. It's a, it's a licensed facility, they, they receive. They are structured. And there, I think, so. The statement must have a definition for the specific.
Yeah, use the same one. That makes sense.
Sure, it's not fine by the state.
Right.
So I pulled this definition of nursing facilities residential. Out of a model ordinance. And one of the things that I'd like to do here from a practical perspective is. Take your low, medium and high impact and define, make specific definitions for the uses that you feel are appropriate and get rid of those general terms. So. In there, it says nursing facilities, so you'd want to define nursing facilities and then put it in the table of uses. And then in this conversation, is that still part of that or is it a separate definition? But let me just, um, go up to the state. I'm sorry if this is going to make me a little dizzy.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. I mean, I don't think we need to put it in land uses if we're not sure on that yet. Because then that's making big decisions. So if you put it in land uses, just have it as a definition there for when we need to use it.
You'd want, if you, if you have a definition, you want to have a purpose to the definition. So. If it's a permit, if you're going to permit it somewhere, then you want to define it and then put it in the table.
So basically, if we put the definition in, we have to go through the whole rigmarole of where we would allow it or not. We'd have to make a decision right now?
No.
No.
We say nursing and. Addiction treatment facility. We, we've clearly defined addiction treatment facility is follow, has to follow all the same rules. As the nursing homes do.
Okay. And then what if we want to separate it out at some point, then we would go in?
Then you would be able to separate it out. A lot easier and say, okay, you know, you have to meet all these plus these additional things or make it its own separate sub ordinance or. You know, expanded within are the main ordinance.
I'm thinking, I think we're going down. Well, we don't want to go down. We're defining things that. A lot of people don't know the definition of. And the federal, federally you'll not see a definition, then you'll see one statewide. And then you may or may not actually one town wise. But what you're going to see in the end, I think. Is that if we define what it is. I think we're gonna be getting ourselves in trouble with that definition. We could get ourselves in trouble with the findings. Who are we to define what that is? Where are, I mean, who are we in a sense that? Our specialty. On her. You've got to come up with, I don't know why we would be defining. Those, I believe, that would be to be defined. By, by law.
Like maybe we shouldn't even touch it at all until we're ready to really realistically look at it.
Even those definitions directly above the stage?
I do have a definition from the state. And towns, a lot of towns are doing this because you, you may want to apply performance standards, so whatever the state's regulations are. You're looking at it specific to your community, not statewide. So if you want to have performance standards, if you want to, you know, allocate where in town they're supposed to go. Um, so there, there are reasons for towns to adopt something locally. You don't have to. And like that, I guess that's the first question, is there a reason to? Separate it and pursue, and, and I wouldn't ask you this evening to make decisions around the final definition and where they're located, but. Do you want to start that conversation and I could get more information for you?
Would it be possible? To have that addressed when the occasion were to arise? No.
No. It has to be in place and there's the process. So you have to, you know, decide amongst yourselves and you have to post it to public hearing, have the public hearing, it goes to the town council, so it's. It's a ways out, it's not something that you could. Last minute make those decisions on.
Oh, exactly. We look awesome. Whatever I want. If you start most.
I am going to take that off the table, yeah. In my opinion, I think we should just leave it out completely until we've. Have a chance to review what the state's ordinance is, what we could. Potentially think that we might want to regulate more if allowed to even, certain things.
The thing all done, trying to anticipate appropriate language and. Verbiage, uh, often deal with.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jim.
How extensive is that state definition?
Looking for it right now.
I mean, is it a short paragraph or is it a multi-page document?
It's, it's a definition, it's no longer than the ones I was just showing you. One of them, in fact, may be the definition and I didn't label it, let's see.
Well, if you could find it and read it, that would help me a lot.
So this one here.
I know that there's. Go ahead.
I, one of these is from Madison, Maine, and I believe the first one is from the state, um, but I'm looking to see if I have that information to confirm that.
Okay.
And that was like.
What would you like for me to provide for you if you'd like to continue the discussion?
Have at least two definitions there. Be sure we have that. If it is a state one, don't mind as a state. And state.
Okay.
And we've got regulations. In certifying of substance abuse treatment programs.
Wait.
There are a lot of different types of facilities that would fall under this category. And, um, some have. They, they each have a different, uh, type of impact on the community. And, um. Um. So I think we need to be pretty careful about this and, um. And not, um, not have a, a lot of, uh, uh, prejudgment. Because, you know, I was the executive director of several different, um. Vision rehabilitation centers. They were, um, residential centers, people lived there. Um, and. The impact on the community was very positive. Um, and then there are other types of centers or, um, or organizations that. Have a, a completely different kind of impact in clientele. That, um. May warrant, uh, you know, a, a further consideration, but. I think we have to be really careful. Not to exclude. Uh, organizations that we don't want to exclude. It's, uh. It's a touchy subject. For a lot of people. And, um. So anyway, that's, that's what I have to say about it. I, I just don't, I don't think that we need to, um. Um, make any, uh. Quick judgments and we need to be thoroughly, um. Fair and honest in our recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Jim. So Dawn, you have enough for our teams.
Yeah, well, I feel like I have enough sense to think that you would like a little more information and. Patrice, you know, bring it on a next agenda or a future agenda and that it may or may not go from there, but you want the information to continue to get to that point.
Okay, move on to the next subject. This document you shared with Madison, that's around the same factors.
That was a document that Anthony shared with me, um. Because they, he serves on that board, I think, so he, they, he was aware of it, and so he shared it because he knew that this was, had been a topic. Um, and said, well, this is what they're doing and that this is actually for licensing, it's not zoning. Um, but you can see that this kind of standards that they're creating and there are towns, the town of Alfred also has a licensing process. And maybe Sanford. Um, a lot of them address it in their zoning. And there's a lot that don't separate it on and address it, so there's, there are multiple ways to look at it.
Additional.
Correct.
Any question? Good, it's next.
Does everyone, does it, does it, um, does it make sense what I'm saying in terms of? The commercial use definition instead of having this lump definition that we have separate definitions in there in the table separately?
You're saying?
Yes.
It's not. Part of the volume, it's deep, fine.
I.
What is?
So here is your definition of commercial use in red, and I just highlighted it because I wanted to, to raise it as a topic tonight. So one of the things that I'm going to suggest is taking out. It's, it excludes rental properties. Um. From a commercial use, from the definition of commercial use, but in my experience, they are usually included. So that would be a point of discussion. Um, so the, there's the overriding general, here's commercial use and then it's broken out below. As to what falls under each, and in the table of uses, these particular uses aren't identified, low, medium and higher in the table of uses and it says which district they're allowed in.
And what do you want to change from this? You want to put each individual piece in the chart?
Correct.
Oh.
Because there's some JLO. Like applications, I mean, it, it sounds like you've been applying it consistently, but it, um. It's, it's very much subject to interpretation and. It's a permissive ordinance, so if you don't say it's permitted. It's not permitted. But we have this catchall. Or similar.
Well, yeah, and similar uses, which we could use at our discretion. Right?
You could, but someone could also argue. And appeal your interpretation that it's similar. You may say it's not similar, someone could say it's similar. And it's not defined.
Usually that. Above two units.
Yeah, that's why I. I would suggest that. Multi-family. So, and I, I, and again, you don't have to decide this tonight, this is the direction that I would suggest going. Um, but.
These charts are just really big.
A point of discussion, yeah. I know.
It's a very, it's just. I don't know.
Well, this table is very small compared to some other ordinances, and at the last packet I had given you examples. Of some other communities. Um, and I, and I a hundred million percent agree with Greg about, we don't want words on the paper just to have words. You know, less is more, as concise as we can make it, easy to use, but sometimes you do need tables and lists. Um. And make it as user friendly as possible. So some communities break it down in the table by. You know, residential uses and commercial uses, so this one in front of me says institutional uses. Industrial uses, so that it's organized more. Um, you could do it alphabetical, you could do it however you'd like to do it, but. It's, it's not uncommon and I would suggest some more uses and definitions to go into the table.
Well, and it's interesting.
So let me jump over, um, put another image up.
So if you had. Something of very large scale. You know, they do specify students, so not like a university, that would obviously be a high impact because it's, they specify students in there for instructional facilities. But in number one, they have barber shop, you know, hair salon, beauty salon, they have a beauty salon that's. You know, twenty-eight thousand square feet and you're going, that's low impact because it's defined in there as low impact. So I, I don't think.
This is how it currently reads?
That's how it currently reads, I don't like.
I think it says something about daycares. Maybe that would just be.
Well, let me scroll down a little bit further, because there is a table. Of attributes that also helps guide you as to what. Level of use you think it is.
Yeah.
Um, so there is, I don't, maybe this is what you're looking for, you need to take care of.
That's the thing is they didn't have any size in here.
A number of customers.
Yeah, a number of customers or square footage of space. Something's unplugged.
You, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't be able to have a gigantic beauty shop with. A number of customers zero to five per hour.
Yeah, but if you had a barber shop that, you know, seated. Hundred people and cut the hair for everybody within a hundred miles, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm not that that's, that's realistic, but it doesn't have. You know, it's focused on the hours of operation and, and be defined this.
Again, even with a barber shop, zero to five an hour. At eight chairs, you'd be doing more.
That's true, the, a number of customers would kind of cover that.
When you have site plan regulations, performance standards. I feel that that's where it's more appropriate to look at the intensity of the use. And then mitigate it. If, you know, if, if it's too excessive. It's going to be too, you could limit the hours, you could, you know, speak to the lighting, it has to be turned off at a certain time. You, you have more control with. With that type of a regulation, once you determine if the use is permitted. Then you can, when you're, when they come in for site plan review, you can gear it towards that particular location, you know, a butter input. It's a little bit, I feel like this is, would be hard for me as a board member to.
Well, we see. Looks like we see everything except for low impact in the. Well, I guess we don't in the residential. I can't remember the zone. It's a general, you know, residential. It's something loose.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on here.
To plug into a good feed.
It's, it's plugged into.
I, I don't think not. That's, there's something wrong with this, uh, HD one, anyway.
Oh, it's gone.
Which one?
Yeah, there's two down.
You know, I had the table, if you bear with me for just a moment, I'd like to get the table of uses up here again, I accidentally closed it.
Is any possibility that MMA may have something that would help us?
Probably, yeah, I can check in with them. Probably, yeah, I can check in with them.
Definitions, definitions or, or something of that nature.
You're talking about overall broad.
Overall.
I have a couple of manuals that come from the state. And they have definition, sample definitions, table of uses. So there are a lot of resources to use.
But yeah, I often, I wonder as I look at some of those. I wonder how a lawyer would look at this. How would, what if it went to, you know, if it went to litigation at some race or another? How would that turn out? Maybe if we knew, whereas we were doing it, that. An M M A attorney could tell us, good, so it's good, it doesn't look good. It's kind of very concerning with all this like. You're calling in our nursing homes early as we're trying to drive people out early the other day and we're doing something else. I'm like. What is this thing we're looking at?
Well, I can give you guidance and then we will have the town attorney review it.
What confuses me is exactly. What are we looking at? We're calling so many things all into one little bucket. I'm like. Wait a minute, is it really a nursing home? No, no, really. Is it a facility or, you know, whi- which is it? Or is it a legitimate?
I'm going to provide you the state definition. I'll give you samples from other communities. Um, I'll give you in the different types of categories. I'll give you a slew of them. To look at before the next meeting.
Do you care for what you ask?
No, I guess I don't want to use the word slew. That's too many. I'll give you more choices.
I'm just kidding.
No, it's okay. I will give you a reasonable amount to, to give you, make you more informed to make a decision. And.
I think that would be helpful to me.
Um, we are. Okay, so bear with me for just a moment. Scroll back. So I'm going to give you more information. We talked about that. Alcohol and drug free house. This is all things that I'm going to provide you for the next meeting. Um, when this first came up, one of the counselors asked. That I look into definitions that for bread and breakfast and boarding house. Because there were some question of, well, is it, is it that use? So I did propose some definitions in here. Um, that just came in as a result of that discussion. And we don't currently have these defined or in our ordinance. So this is a potential definition, and if you'd like to have this used loud, we, we would look at the table of uses and decide where it will be appropriate. And then also on this same page, boathouse. It's defined, it's not in our table of uses. I was looking at the definite, I was looking at piers, docks, wars and bridges, and I thought maybe it could go into there, although I don't believe we would allow a boathouse. Under current regulations, in which cases it only referencing, do we have it defined because we may have an existing non-conforming? Boathouse.
We just did want to, a little bit ago, but if that was a new structure, that wouldn't be allowed.
And they called that a boathouse.
Yes.
That's not really.
Right.
Really define a boathouse as a.
Right.
There's was a shade near the water.
Which we do have.
Yeah.
Real boathouses, but.
I'm sure there are.
I'll call, I'll see, I've seen them.
I don't know why the purpose to define it.
And this isn't anything critical. I just was flagging some things as I was going through.
If it's the point and, and it has a specific. Set of uses or specific set of requirements, other than other structures and other shoreline zones that we already apply. Then we probably should keep it in there. If it's not defined, it's going to be like any structure, whether structures. In year around the water, our goal is always to try to make it more non, make it less non-conformal. Or at least keep it where it is. So if something got destroyed, if they wanted to build it back, we can allow them to build it back because that's allowed in shoreline zone.
So it's not in the use table for a reason, but we want the definition is what I'm hearing.
But I'm not sure we want the definition.
According to Mark, he said, if you have actual boathouses.
Yeah, over the water defines that there's below the normal high water line. Uh. If it turns down, falls down, you can't, they can't be rebuilt in these circumstances.
I mean, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, that's, or is, if it's destroyed, you can't go and redo it. That's what he told me. Because Barry was doing his, he called it a boathouse. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm proposing like I, I believe, yeah, any, any, anything that's over in the water, you can't, you're done.
Yeah.
So this is a potential strike. I'm just going to go ahead and.
And I'm not sure why you're adding bed and breakfast and boarding house. Unless that's something we want to regulate differently.
Because it had, I had an inquiry, you know, can you look at these types of definitions because the Zisk house came up and no one really knew what it was? So.
I don't think it would be called a year though.
No, so these are different uses and that we don't have. So are these uses that you want to consider adding? And they're very similar.
Um, the only way we should be adding them here is if we take that word and apply it someplace.
In the table of uses, correct.
It is, or it's, you know, either that or define it with multiple other things. You know, we might say it's an apartment building. And we're going to call that a boarding house and that's where it's going to fall and that's where it's going to be regulated as.
Honestly, I would, I would stay away from regulating bed and breakfast and Airbnbs.
They have to be regulated.
Well, a bed and breakfast is different. It's a very clearly commercial use. Um, and the Airbnb.
We do not like it.
Don't do it.
They have spent lots and lots and lots of money and they regulated them and. The good, honest people were not causing any problems, but the bulk of the town is causing a lot of problems because people just. Oh, they're my cousin, they're my friend, whatever. And, you know, it's just nothing. That's what they found out. They tried to take it to court, they lost and.
Just a lot of bank.
I definitely don't want to put anything in.
You don't want to add those as permitted uses in town, either of those.
Unless they're defined or we want to add those definitions into the ordinance themselves.
That's what I'm proposing. Here's a suggested definition. If you want this use in town. Here's an example of how you could define it, if you want it. And if you decide you do, the next step would be to put it in the table of uses. So it's actually permitted in specific locations.
I, I feel like a bed and breakfast plays to the same thing as an Airbnb. Like a lot of people will do it in their own house. You can.
Anything that's not in this has to come to us for a conditional use permit. So. If we define it, then we have to say what zone does it go in?
Right.
What can we do? What can't we do? And I don't think anybody's banging down the door to put twelve of these in.
No.
So.
Actually, an Airbnb is different from bed.
It is.
Yeah, it's very different.
Well, some, some do, some don't.
We, we rented one down in Cooperstown and there was a, a lady that took care of it from the homeowner.
Yep.
Never saw her.
Yeah, that's what's supposed to happen.
Yeah, she didn't come by. We cooked her on meals.
Some of them do. Some of them will Airbnb it, but they'll bring you breakfast. I've had a couple of them do that, but it's not common. Most Airbnbs, you just go and you don't see anybody ever.
So I guess.
So in my role.
Yeah.
If someone comes in tomorrow and says, oh, I'd like to have a bed and breakfast, where can I put it? What, so the way it's currently written.
We don't know.
Well, I would go to the low, medium and high impact and try to, if it's clear, otherwise, you know, work with Mark, with you guys. And then where are those allowed? That's how it currently works. So it doesn't mean that it's necessarily excluded, but is it similar enough to something else you already allow? So it doesn't mean they're precluded, but it will be easier moving forward if you want them to, to define it. And you don't need to make a decision now. This.
I just feel like if you're defining it.
Yeah.
You know, it's to be one for one. Not defining it. Then they got to come to us anyways.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if it's low impact, no. If they're the same zone, but pretty much everything else is anyways. And it's conditional use permit and we have all of our fourteen factors to evaluate. And impact of the neighborhood is one of them. So that we have leverage as far as. Approving that and, and or denying it or whatever we want to do in that case by case basis. Again, if we had a lot of those, I might be in agreement that it's worth defining.
I think we have one in town.
Yeah, I worry about.
Not in town, but.
I, I worry about defining too many things.
Right.
Just for the sake of defining them.
It's only if you want to permit them.
Well, if you want to, you need to. Because we could always permit anything.
Mm-hmm. You're going to have site plan regulations, which would then come to you all for commercial uses.
Yep.
And then you're going to have different set of standards besides the conditional use criteria. You could have lighting, landscaping. Um, buffering, like those are all other elements that you could create.
Right. And I understand how it'd be nice if we had every possible use that could possibly come down, define with ordinances. And exactly how we want it done. I just don't think that's a very good use of our time. To be waiting and defining all those ordinances. We have a lot of bigger fish to fry, like our subdivision plan and other things. That I think we should be updating our ordinances. That's a bigger deal than defining something that might happen sometime in the future that. We're not even sure and we could spend hours, if not days, trying to define. Okay, what's a boarding house? So we argue about the definition and then what should we regulate it to and why should we regulate it? And then we don't even get one. It's, you know, it's, it's. I can see how we could spin out of control. We're not Portland. So.
I agree.
So are you striking? I would for now. I approve both of them for now.
Yeah.
But, uh. Want to break it down, what you're going to do?
I might look in up there. Launching facility. This is another question I had. Well, is this inclusive in the pier, stocks, wharves, bridges? Because it extends. Low normal high water line. Is this something that's already addressed? Because we define it, but I didn't see in the table. Do you think that is it, is it already fall within that existing piers, wharves? Because that is in the use table.
It's not something we could afford. It's a state asset.
Well, you can determine where you, where you're going. So you have to be at least as restrictive as the state. You can be more restrictive. So where you allow boat launching facilities. That's locally.
State's the only ones going to build one.
Yeah.
My land, my front shorefront and bill a whole lot, whole lot. I would be shit.
So no one's concerned about this right now.
No.
Okay.
There's two, two ways to look at it. There's individual war and.
Bless you.
Those are not permitted boat launching facilities. They're, they're, they're there. Somebody launch. Says, say, your scenario.
Okay.
I think for now, yeah.
So this goes back to what we were just talking about, adding definitions and, and I hear what Greg's saying of, well, we don't want to add too many. So let's just set this aside for now as well. Because this was just going into the low, medium, high impact uses. Um, the underlying ones are just ones that I had, um, looked at from other ordinances. Cemetery is in, um, the use table, but it's not defined. Here's an example of a definition. If you want to use that, or if you'd like something different, I can provide other options, but it is in the use table, so it should be defined. Pardon me?
It is. Oh, it is. Look at that, number twenty-two.
Where do we allow it?
We allow it in general, commercial, industrial, village and rural.
All right.
But not in the general residential. Village.
Limited commercial.
Well, it's allowed in the commercial. It's allowed in the village.
By CEO, it doesn't require a planning board.
Yeah, we don't even get to see those. If they want one in the industrial village or. I would think state, you can't. I don't know.
So is that a good subject?
Yes.
Well.
We have to have a definition.
Yeah.
Because it's in our table. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Is this?
The definition you guys find.
I mean, it sounds good.
It's, it's like, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to leave that.
You had a lot of land, you wanted to build your own cemetery.
Is it legal to bury like your family member in the rural zone?
Absolutely not.
Say like somebody dies and you want to have a little cemetery in your backyard. What about your dog?
Dogs?
Legally, no. We cannot.
I would never do that.
So. Community living arrangement. This is a state definition, except for the word facility. Um, and I took that from a different ordinance. So.
Do some of that.
These, when, I'm just trying to think. So when the council heard a presentation by the Zisk house, they were saying, well, you have to treat us like single family zoning. But actually, they were, they were exaggerating the fact that it's eight or fewer. Which has to be deemed single family for the purposes of zoning. And we didn't, we didn't have that in our ordinance, and I think that we should add that moving forward. It's. I think it just clarifies that.
That's community living.
Yeah. Yeah. So something to think about. And I, I'll get you this topic. And it isn't because it's considered a single family residential. The state says this living arrangement, you towns, you have to look at it as it's single family residential. And that's what that discourse was trying to say. They fell under this, but they didn't, and we didn't have this definition in our ordinance. Yep.
Yeah.
Well, no.
I'll be honest with you. I didn't know this existed. I had to consult with the town attorney who said, who said, well, this is the line. This is what you can regulate and what, yeah.
So it's this. Organization that's doing this. Home download that we just approved. They only had eight people and it would be considered a. Computer community living.
Mm-hmm.
Facility.
If they didn't have services beyond that peer support.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, there's. There's forty something. Yeah, it's not, it doesn't fall under, but that.
Leave it out? I think it's fine to leave it in. We should define it someplace other than.
It has to be in the table.
Has to be someplace.
Should be able, it should be allowed anywhere you allow a single family residential because, okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
Because we're defining it here, it should.
Okay.
Like sometime war.
Yep.
Do you have direction about that?
Okay. Moving along. This again goes in hand with the previous discussions and so, um, we're just going to set that aside for now, that kind of big care, okay? In this, um. This was Alfred was the example. So daycare. It's referenced in the parking section. You have a, you have a calculation for daycare. You have to have so many parking spaces, but it's not. Defined and it's not in the use table.
It's, I know that we considered it low impact commercial.
So if we look at the low impact commercial definition.
Somebody, it's the only reason I know that.
Low to begin with.
Home daycare is what I was talking about. Yeah. Yeah. A center, center. Yeah. Yep.
It's on our table. That almost pushes. Yeah, because it's, it's, it was zero to five clients per day, you know, and this is just guidance. It's not like, oh, you have six kids, so you got to go to high. All the other things would be low, so it probably would stay low, but. If they had, you know, sixty kids, that would probably. Change of where they can do it and the fact they'd have to come to us even if they could do it.
So. Where low impact uses are permitted, I just want to make sure that you. Cross-reference at some point as we're going through this to make sure that the types of uses that you're saying are low impact. That should be going where they're currently allowed, or else you'd want to change it into a different level of impact. Okay, moving on. So I'm sorry, we are leaving this and we're not. This is currently, you would define this as low impact currently. Or depending on the number of kids.
Care would be.
It depends on the size.
Yeah.
If it's a commercial facility, you are high based on the taste. If it's a commercial facility, you are high based on the taste, low, high impact. And it's not the definitions that below that, that whole table that showed. Yeah, that shows all of the, all the different parts and pieces.
Yeah, we don't have a center. Well, no. We have the one, the church in town does a larger preschool.
Yeah, a church is gonna get regulated different.
Yeah.
So they've already got.
Yeah, we don't have a center, but we could potentially have a center. Why not?
We don't have a definition of church or it's not, and it's not listed anywhere in the use table. Just FYI, that was another one I had flagged.
Churches were in here.
I didn't see it unless it's in the um, definition of commercial uses. So I'm gonna flag that.
Wait, we don't have that in land uses is what you're saying?
I didn't see it in the table of uses.
And we don't have a definition of it. Right, that's why I'm asking.
I've been to court a number of times over some of this stuff, so I, I get a little antsy.
What you put down, no matter how well you write it, they will say it's wrong. Just not be an argumentative. I'm just saying it's a fact. So we can do the best job we possibly can and they'll still argue that it's.
The electric generation, the reason why I flagged this just was because it was in essential service de- uh, definition. And. Excluded is the development of electrical generation projects. So it made me think, well, what is an electrical generation project? So I flagged that as something potentially to define. Essential services in the table, so it shows where they can go. But I'm, I was unclear as to this thought, the last sentence.
Can we just define it right there in that sentence? Instead of having a second definition?
And you know, like I had put this in the beginning, um, suggested, and I don't wanna go back and make you dizzy, but the um, construction of the ordinance. So shall, may, um, it speaks to how the ordinance is applied and interpreted. And if there isn't a definition, it's that, you know, generally acceptable definition or the, you know, whatever the certain. Dictionary definitions. There's always to do that. But this one was hanging out there in my mind. Is there just a general, is it anything that? It's, and it's excluding them.
Yeah.
Shall not include service shops or buildings with journalists or. Well, yeah, because didn't they say that there are essential surfaces? No, we said no to that. Solar farms, right? Oh. Right, that's why I'm saying we might have said that they weren't essential services or did we say they are?
Well, they are defined separately and have specific zones.
I feel like the state might have said, hold on. Right. And it's not generation.
It shouldn't even be in there. That's why I said it doesn't fit. It doesn't fit what you'd call essential service.
Does that make more sense?
Yeah, I should cross it off there and cross it off on top and then you're done.
But in, in the context of, there's no mention of generation.
Yeah, I, I don't know why you.
But there's some way to talk about, must be some way when you were talking about solar.
Yeah, that system has its own ordinance.
Yeah.
It has an entirely own ordinance and that's why I don't.
The only other scenario would be hydro generation.
Well, you could have a.
Gas generation.
Generation, there's ton of generation facilities, but that's why I don't understand these. But it's all, like you said, it's all, that's all distribution and then they stick a generate, it's like generations, not distribution anyway.
So I, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Family, so this came up as a result of the um, discuss as well. We're looking at those definitions. We were advised that. You can't.
Yeah, that's an old.
Give a number of persons.
I think we can. Yeah.
So this is really.
By blood or marriage.
This is really more legal. So that's the existing definition and the suggestion is to strike that last part and then add in. Yeah, just hasn't been picked up.
Some people are too blood related too. Then you get weird. Never know.
So this one here to me is of particular interest. Um, once the horse is out of the gate. Fast food drive through, one, one goes in, they all go in and you got snack alley. So I'm not saying that there's a big market for that here that, you know, Wendy's is chomping at the bit to get in. But if, if a fast food drive through restaurant wants to come, usually they all come. So I think it's really important to be specific as to is this a use you want or not? Because it is not in the table of uses. And it is defined. This is the definition that's in there currently. It's in the, it's in the parking section and it's defined. So should it be in the use table and where would you like it to go and is that the same place as other restaurants? You may have no concern about drive-throughs, but if you don't want fast food and you don't allow drive-throughs, you're not gonna see them.
Yeah.
And they had a drive-through from the bank previously is my understanding as well. It wasn't necessarily a new drive-through use. They had a drive-through bank. Is that correct? Oh, it is? Oh.
Be the bank downtown.
Is fast eddy's considered a drive-through fast food? Cause you do park.
Well.
You don't drive through.
You, you don't.
True that. RFK is gonna come in and get rid of our fast food processed foods anyway, guys. Alright, so.
So.
You gotta, you gotta go through the bank or I'd sue to have enough money to go.
But some banks are drive-throughs, the pharmacies have drive-throughs. There are other, other types of drive-throughs, but my focus on this was just that it's already in there, so it should.
Case by case, because I really wouldn't care if we had a fast food. I mean, personally, I mean, I wouldn't love it, but. You'd probably use it, yeah. My kids would try to use it. But.
It's up to, I mean, it's your community. I'm just pointing out that if you allow it, they'll come. Like one comes, the law comes. So it's that unintended consequences.
But we can't, I mean.
There's only so many places they can do it.
What you described there is fast.
Don't you, how does that a drive-through? Do they drive through like the queue and drive around the building or?
You're doing it. People drive in, in fact, people order on the phone, start, get their food and move on. That's a drive-through.
Oh, you know, you might be, I think you can do that, can't you? And it's fast food.
You can do that in hand.
Yeah.
Pick up, pick up uh, grocery orders.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Driving right through.
So right now we got two, two cases. I think our fast headies and.
Usually the physical layout defines the drive-through, so you have queuing.
So what are you trying to, what are you trying to uh? Manage or administer or?
I, I guess I'm trying to raise the question. So you got an email. I don't know if you've seen it yet. The comprehensive plan just today, the state said that plan is consistent. It's final. So I'm gonna get you copies of the comprehensive plan, but um, and I haven't checked back against that. Because I've had this experience, I just wanted to flag it as make sure that it is what you want, that it's, you know, consistent with the comprehensive plan. Because it's one of those things that when it happens, it happens to us. That's all you may say. Great, we want it.
I think fast food restaurants, stuff like that, you're like McDonald's or Wendy's. They have to be on like city water and sewer. They're not gonna go anywhere rural where they'd use a septic or well, right? So. Yeah. You think they would use a septic or?
They may not, but they could.
They can?
Sure. They're gonna wanna find a place where traffic is slow and people are gonna be able to come in and out. That, that's what they're looking for. But there's nothing to say. They could put one right out by your house.
Oh, well, that would be disgusting.
Well, they could.
We would have to really look at that application hard.
I don't know why they would, but they could. It's in the rural zone. It's a lot. They have to come to the planning board because it's conditional use permit, but they could come and say, I wanna put a McDonald's in, run a Jamie's house, just for example. And. I guess that, that's.
Looking at this different now, aren't you?
I'm looking at this different now.
Downtown, it's alright.
So I just figured that would be commercial.
So visual impact. I always think when I come in.
You do everything. There's nothing that, that's really banned from the rural, it's just.
But then you also don't want two O two looking like. No offense to Manchester or Augusta, but you know, looking like that, I like us having trees and it's pretty and having to do buffers and. That sort of thing, but we can always decide that as well.
That, that's my only thought though, is if we're gonna go down this road, there's two questions. You're saying it's already used in the parking section, so we should have a definition. If we've used it in the parking section.
Or strike it from those.
Or strike it from the parking section. But then the second question is, do we want to have? Parts or have it or just for fast food? That's a different question than whether we put it in the definitions or not.
Can we limit the number of?
Yeah, you can do all kinds of cool things.
And you could change the definition too, cause I hear your concern of there's, there's some. Drive-through fast food that has different, a different characteristic to it that you don't think of as.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm gonna throw something else out there while you're thinking about it, because this is, I, when I come in and leave every day, I come down two O two. Old Orchard Beach Saco, when you go into the gateways to their communities, they have. Storage facilities, a lot of storage facilities and it's just so unappealing. It doesn't say anything about the community. It's.
Uh, we've gotten a couple of people not to come back with applications on those.
So currently they're permitted, right? There is under the way that it's outlined, so I would just suggest you look at that.
Yeah.
So maybe look at that. And so in terms of community character, um, you know, the gateways to the community. Just wanna make sure that you are okay with those uses because currently they're allowed.
But I think. Charter is really more to deal with the ordinance, forcing the ordinance. And the comprehensive plan, their, their challenge was really to come up with what they want the future of the town to look like. Not that we can't have input, but we could, should have joined if we wanted to really talk about what the comp plan is gonna have in it.
It's very vague, so you have to decide, well, this is, here's the warm fuzzy thing that the town wants. How do we get there?
Well, yeah.
And so then what's what you do?
So I have.
Yeah.
We see what.
I, I will be getting.
So I think that, that's a different discussion. You know, here you wanted to find it or do we remove it from the parking?
Well, you don't necessarily have to have an ordinance just because you got a definition, right?
No.
If you put it, if you put it in the table, then you can limit it to commercial.
Yeah.
You know, and who approves and all that.
And that's the question is, do we wanna do that? That would be a very simple thing on the short, on the short term. If we can just put it in the table and put a bunch of those where we don't want it and then put. When it for, for anything else and they have, but that means we're, by putting it in the planning board, that means we are allowing it. We can't put nose across the board.
Right, you gotta have at least one.
At least one you can put it, but we can have some requirements and then we have to add those as a separate sub ordinance to say, if you're doing a fast food. These are the requirements. We want you to have X amount of space. We want you to have your signage like this. We want this, we want that, we want the other thing. You know, they can't see from two O two. You have to have a vegetated buffer in front of it. You have to have whatever.
Well, the smell also of fast food, you don't want that near somebody's house or apartment, so it's not bugging them all day long. Did you match the smell of McDonald's all day long and you're sitting there trying to be on a diet?
You could limit it to, you know, the rural zone and the industrial zone and commercial zone. And then we could say, okay, then put in the requirements to say, yeah, you wanna be certain distance from residential properties. Something like that says the, the rural zone is, you're allowed to do pretty much everything. So, um.
So I suggest we leave it there for now.
Okay, I'll try to get some more information to help, help you, you know, draw a conclusion. Okay, so let's keep moving. Hotel motel hospital, again, these, that goes back to the low, medium, high, trying to ferret out and put into the table, so these we can. Set aside.
I think, yeah, Don made a good point with going below with looking at the number of, the number of clients. That's gonna help us define most of those things, so.
Well, I guess here's what I would think is, um, if you're, if these are things that you imagine to be in certain districts. I guess we wanna make sure based on the definition that it's allowed to go where you want it to go. And that we haven't, you know, accidentally omitted it from a practical perspective based on that low, medium, high.
But if we include something in our table and then say it can be used in one or more cells. We don't have a whole lot of definitions, but when they come to the planning board. We can say we want a buffer between this and so you don't really need to write the ordinance ahead of. We have that right to do that.
Right, right. I mean, we just have to use our fourteen points if we're gonna define it and it could be community impact. But the only thing we have to be wary of is that they still have the boarding, board of appeals. They could then take that to the board of appeals and say, we wanna appeal this because we think it's, it could go here. So, you know, we're not, they can go around us that way and they'd be the bad guys, not us. That's fine.
And I think one of the reasons it's important to get the site plan regulations in place is because you do have those criteria. However. Developers wanna know what the criteria are in advance and so.
Nice, but try to, try to do our best. That's, that was the biggest reason we wrote a solar, solar ordinance was to say. This is what we want in your package. We wanna see all this stuff before we're willing to approve it. Because before it was, we approved it because, not that we really couldn't have not approved it. But we didn't really have any ability to know what we want to see, so they came into some good packages and some really bad packages. I don't know if that's a good package.
Yeah.
We don't, you know, we asked a lot of questions and had a lot of discussion because they didn't have a good clear package. Now I think they're comfortable with that guidance, so if we have that, we can decide to say we're gonna provide that guidance to them and how to do this. If it's one every six years, I don't think it's worth defining how to do that.
No, they could come to a pre-meeting like.
Exactly, exactly. That's, that's what I feel like. That's what I even recommend.
What do you think about?
Yeah, what do you think about this? Sketch out your plan. What are your thoughts and then, okay, here's our thoughts. Go make a package and.
Yeah.
Then we'll be able to talk about it, because that'll let us know what it is we're doing and not doing.
And that way they'll know ahead of time before they come.
Right, we told the ropers pretty clearly that we're happy with pretty much everything except their impervious cover. We, we weren't really in a position we wanted to approve it with that impervious cover, so they had to figure out a way to make it work.
Sometimes if you define things too damn good. They'll come and they'll figure a way around.
Oh, yeah, you box it.
I read your ordinance.
It didn't have to set the other.
I hear us saying we even hope that I won't tell our considerations this one.
Some of these things I'm thinking, um, when they're cycling, I mean, I need to get the draft cycling regulations to you. Because they're performance standards and it may alleviate a lot of concerns around different uses.
But if these aren't in the tape, if these aren't currently in the ordinances, I would suggest we strike them for.
So if a hotel comes to me tomorrow, they wanna go in.
They need to come with a pre-meeting and come talk to us.
Now, we don't require that. They could come and slap an application on my desk.
And I could say exactly what I will say, because I know what I'll say.
Yeah.
Cause I guarantee they didn't handle stormwater. I guarantee they didn't do the community input. They didn't get any input, so it's gonna be pretty hard to sell. Um, for me to say, yeah, that's exactly, you did it exactly right. Pretty gonna be tough. They could, it could be. But I'm saying it's unlikely that if they didn't. Come and ask it for any input that they got it perfect, pretty unlikely. We're suffering in water here, so. Um, they're gonna have a hard time dealing with that aspect.
No hotels coming to this area right now. Not yet. Any ears?
Um, automobile graveyard is, is part in the table of uses, junkyard, automobile graveyard. So I just put that in there for consistency. Doesn't change anything, just matches the table. Uh, so when I was going through different uses, this is another one where I thought, well, we wanna consider this and where it goes. That's very controversial. Uh, so when I was going through different uses, this is another one where I thought, well, we wanna consider this and where it goes, that's very controversial, FYI, but if you. Well, right now.
Dog kettle, are we talking? Oh.
Yeah.
Neighbors love that.
Now, the noise ordinance is, I wanna try, I think we've boxed ourselves in by defining it. And we'd end up allowing it where our noise ordinance is very clear, if you leave a dog outside and they're barking. And the police show up and say, get it inside, you're in violation of the noise ordinance, period, says specifically barking dogs. I mean, it's ten, yeah, I know, if, but it's ten P M to six A M. That's the time window, so it's, and you know, but if you, if you have a kennel and you're leaving them outside, your neighbor complains, you're done.
So right now, this will be one of those things, like, what, low, medium, high, it's gonna fall under one of them. And it's, yeah.
I guess it falls into exactly what we're looking at with the table, the number of customers. If there are dogs and it's not violating the noise ordinance, it'd be low, low commercial.
So, if you look at low commercial, I'm playing devil's advocate.
Yep.
Loud in the village.
It's allowed under Mark's approval.
Yep.
Yep, but if they violate the noise order, noise ordinance, they're done.
Would that apply to roosters?
Noise ordinance applies to everything.
Yeah, I got a neighbor that's. And I hear the rooster, he goes all day long. I guess he does at night too, probably did a brother two weeks training, so.
Bothered me, the rooster, I wonder why.
Not my rooster, no.
So it's a highly annoying rooster?
And nightingale.
I guess if you live next to it. Up the next street, I can hear.
Okay, strike them. I'm surprised they can, they can't have a rooster in that zone. On the other side of the apartment.
What?
No, not in residential, rural, you can't.
You can't have chickens in the residential?
No, you can't have baby goat, they have to come to us. My wife wants baby goat.
Let everybody have fresh farm eggs. I want a mini cow, really bad. I want one of the pretty Highland mini cows, they're so cute. Like, I wanna buy like forty acres and breed baby Highland cows and sell them.
There you go.
How cool would that be? You, cost like six thousand dollars for one of those. Five to six thousand dollars for a real fancy mini baby Highland cow?
No, good.
They're designing.
They're so cute.
Sorry.
Yeah, I don't know why, I saw I had mineral extraction highlighted, that is in the table of uses, so I'm not sure why I had put that in there. It's already in the, it's already in the, um, table.
Yeah, since we have an ordinance.
We do, so I can't remember why, mineral exploration, maybe it was supposed to be mineral, I, I'm gonna go double check myself on this.
Well, we have, we have its own order. Mineral extraction, we better make sure to save this.
If that exists right now. In our current definitions. And it's in the, and we have it in the table, so I'm not, I don't recall why I.
Definition that the ordinance uses.
Yeah, it's on table eighty, number eighteen.
And then mineral exploration we define as well, but again, it's up there. Alright, that isn't the table, and I'm sorry, I don't know why I had that in there. I'll remember tomorrow, not laying in bed tonight. Um. When is the review committee? Yep, so, we do have this identified. Under low impact, but it doesn't necessarily mean you need to define it because there are other, or similar, right, so because it's broad.
Well, and again, low impact, if it's a nursing facility with less than five clients. As soon as you start to have twenty patients being on the table, that's closer to high, and you easily could say that.
Right.
So, I would say it's, it's, if it's small, yeah, it's low, and that's fine.
You just have to remember about that tape.
We just have to remember that tape, exactly.
Don't forget it.
Yep.
So, I'm gonna play devil's advocate again, why didn't we allow? That use, because it would have been high impact, right, it wouldn't have been low impact?
Right.
But we allowed it. Wherever it's high.
We didn't pay attention all day. We are.
For what case? Are we talking about the? I wasn't here for that one, I don't know what you guys did.
So right now, high impact is allowed. This floor, it's allowed in general, commercial, industrial, village and rural. So I do wanna do that cross check of stuff, just make sure. General residential. Um, I'll just reiterate, I'm not a big fan of the low, medium, high system, okay, uh. So then, no to this?
Think, I think looking at this, reading the table, I think I would have probably put that facility at closer to B. Because they're talking, you know, six to twelve hours, or six to twelve customers per hour. Foration visit, peak traffic time, daytime order evening slightly different. And then restaurant seating was twenty to seventy-five, and then we're like about thirty or forty person facility. I don't think we could get away with calling it high anyways.
No, they didn't have that many.
No, it was a lot smaller, so that's why I said, I think, I think I would have had to say, using that table, I would have called it medium. And medium is allowed in the general residential up the planning board, so I would say we did it perfect. If I'm a lawyer.
Maybe you should be.
People have said that. I told you, I can spot anything.
I wouldn't wanna be stuck with it.
No, I, I, yeah, exactly, I'm an engineer.
I see all this advertising and always. Stuck your toe at McDonald's, come see us.
Even if it was your fault.
Yeah, that's right, I love that.
So this one here, I just thought it might make it more clear if we say public utility entity, because they're not talking about the use, they're talking about. From corporation, they're talking about. The organization versus. The electric lines, so we have that whole other separate definition, so if you could chew on that one, I feel like that would make that more clear.
How does that tie into the previous definition we just created?
Kinda remember what that was. Um, essential services?
Yeah.
I know, sorry.
I feel like motion sickness.
Everyone look away, okay. Okay, so here's essential services, so those are the actual service, in my mind, those are the services, and then the. The other definition appears to apply to the organization that facilitates that use.
When, where do we? Did we use it anywhere?
Essential services is in the table of uses.
I know where this is.
Yeah, the other one maybe not.
The other. Somebody acted to be the one.
Let me just double check the table. I would think the, well, that could be professional office, or it could be.
Those versus a distribution center, if it's part of their distribution chain, then I would consider that an essential service. If it's just their office, it's a building, then I'd say too bad.
Well, go, go back to that description, one we're on currently.
Okay, I was just checking to see where.
Part of their distribution system, so if their offices, blood and their. Well, if they're, if they're, if they're tools and their distribution. Storage facility, that's part of their system, but if they're just an administrative building, they're just an administrative building.
So you think the other one isn't necessary?
Right, that's what I'm thinking, is I think we leave this one alone and get rid of the other one.
Okay, close your eyes, look away, folks, look away.
But if we don't use that in the ordinance, it says public buildings.
I'll do a search.
We don't use that anywhere, yeah, do a search, but I would potentially remove, remove if it doesn't exist. Because I think it just could kinda confuse that. Weird that it says any person. Who's a public utility?
Alright, I feel like I know what to do there, um. Recovery residents, we'll look at that, it's the other group, recreational vehicle. Here with me so I can remember what I was doing. It is defined, so I highlighted, oh, so it's not in the table of uses, so is that something that? I guess I need to do a word search for some of, several of these to see. It's not in the table of uses, but you're right, is it someplace else, because sometimes they allow you to have it, but it's sore in your yard, but it has to be fifteen feet from the property line, you have to have a tarp on it. Uh, let me look and see if this is someplace in the ordinance.
Why are all of them here?
I'm not saying that you need to do that, but maybe that's, you know, why it's separate, okay.
Yeah, if it's not referenced anywhere, yeah, we don't need to reference it at all.
Good thing to just kinda search to make sure they're all, they're all. I know that takes time. You know, just copy, paste it into the search function and just say, where is it, and say, oh, okay, oh, it is you.
Low hanging fruit, I can do that, so restaurant, um. Listed as in the parking requirements, we've got standard restaurant, fast food, um, drive-through, and just restaurant. So there's three different types of restaurants, and that's, you know, it talks about the different level of seats, so do you wanna leave restaurants? Under, that's the low, medium, high?
Think so. There's specific, specifically number of seats in there. I guess the only thing we'd have to worry about is if someone wanted a. Multi-lane drive-through or something, say, the number of seats was less than twenty, and they're like, oh, it's low impact.
Yeah.
Because it's.
What if it's in a Roma Joe's? We'll let that one slide in.
Well, that might have a low enough number of customers, I don't know.
Yeah.
Starbucks.
Uh, oh, yeah, that's why I did, yeah, I was gonna give you more information on that, so that was left. Alright, for more work, more work on that one, um, so recreational vehicle, I'll look that up, restaurant, we're gonna leave. I'm gonna give you more information on the drive-through, so retail business, we don't have a definition of retail business. So I put one in there to see if that's something that you wanted to add separately, let me just check the low, medium, high and see, I think it does reference retail up to twenty-five hundred square feet. So. Here's some food for thought for you. Um, you can. Put a maximum allowed square footage, gross square footage, whoever you wanna define it, on retail uses in the town. So this is similar to fast food, like thinking with the character of the town, um. You know, the, the visual images, looking at the comprehensive plan. And maybe people want all of these uses, but visualize the square footage, and if you, if you do wanna limit it and not necessarily have some of these uses. You could put a maximum footprint on gross floor area. And then you could always decide also, we will allow these types of businesses this size in this area, but not in this area, it's.
Well, I mean, medium, it, it kind of implies this, when you, when it's listed as medium, that all retail space is going to be at least medium. Because it says less than twenty-five hundred square feet is medium. So that kind of implies that all retail space is going to be at least medium.
Yeah.
If it's bigger than twenty-five, okay, then it's going to be popping. And in the high, if you look at the number of customers per hour, it does list that, does list seating, does list. You know, hours, rate, and, um, so, I think there's enough flexibility that it's going to be at least medium.
So if it's high, so let's say it's permitted.
High if it's big, yeah.
Do you want a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot retail? And, and I'm not advocating either way, you know, it just goes by the comprehensive plan and.
Saying, to me, it's high, it's, we're already limiting what zone it could be, and it could be in the village, industrial, and.
And is that the intention?
Can it be in rural?
Rural, everything can be in rural, you just.
Poor rural.
Plus, I mean, they would have a lot more requirements.
Rural just wants baby Highland cows, chickens, not Walmarts.
So, but everything can, rural, you can't limit it, and I think that was something Joel says, you have, you really have to be careful. Truly, multi-use. But we've already limited it. If it's high, it really would, if it's twenty-five, if it's over twenty-five hundred square feet, if it's three thousand square feet, it automatically is high. Which means that they can only go on one of those three zones.
But you don't have any standards.
Right, but if it's gonna be rural, they wanna put a twenty-five hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand square foot facility in front of Jamie's house and, in a very. Our quote-unquote residential area, I would think that that would be something we could have a discussion about, pretty unlikely we wanna approve that.
Well, it'd be a challenge to deny it, because if it meets the ordinance requirements, you have to approve it.
No, number thirteen on our ordinance requirements impacts the neighbors, we say no, go away, that's completely within our authority. They could fight it, they could go to the Board of Appeals, and they might approve it, or they might not, and they could go get their lawyer. But that's an interpretive, very open-ended number thirteen, not to mention, they gotta meet all the stormwater requirements and all the other requirements that I'm gonna lay out for them.
So what that means is. As a developer, I don't know if I can do that, I gotta make up, and I think that leaves you wide open to appeal for sure.
Yeah, but.
Because I'm gonna engineer, I'm gonna put all the soft costs in and have you tell me no.
Yeah, and they're gonna lose every time, because they're gonna come in here unprepared, not knowing what we want, if we try to lay out. What a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot facility needs, we're gonna miss stuff. If we have them show up, because then if we miss something, they say, we gave you exactly what you asked for, we would lose.
That's fine.
That's why I don't wanna put it, I specifically do not want that in there, period, that's my fault. Because if we put it in there, they show up with exactly what we put, and we screwed up and didn't put all the right things.
Yeah, or you don't allow it, or you don't allow it, I guess that's what I'm saying is, do you want it, or do you wanna say, we want a maximum of what a grocery store would be, like a Hanafred. We're okay with that, but anything more than that, we're not gonna permit it, that's the question I have.
Can't we just, why can't we just say, commercial areas only, commercial?
We could remove it from rural, and it's an industrial and commercial only, or industrial and village, village only.
Right, and then how many spots like that are there?
I mean, and if they wanna put something like that in there, and, and, you know, look at the industrial park, if they wanted to put a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. A two hundred and fifty thousand square foot facility, would anybody really concerned, be concerned about that? It'd be good business, gonna be jobs, gonna be a lot of good things for the town, I wanna, I don't wanna limit that, but.
Just not to affect our neighbors.
Well, and that's where the rural zone and number thirteen on our level, on our, on our existing ordinance. Gives us that flexibility to say, you can't stick this facility, this is clearly gonna be a night and day operation, this is gonna be a lot of, we think you have houses all around it. You need either a much bigger buffer, much bigger lot, where you're gonna own everything in every direction. Or we're not gonna approve it, and we have the right to not approve it. So I think we have all the flexibility, and I think by defining it, we lose that flexibility. Because I'm not, I'm afraid we wouldn't be able to define it well.
I, I agree with that.
And I, and I don't wanna limit a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot facility, if they wanna go in the industrial park. And put in a half a million square foot facility, hey, that could be an awesome thing for the town, I don't wanna immediately just cross it off the list without hearing about it.
In the industrial district, but what about in the rural district?
The rural district, we allow it, but I think there's a lot more facets, we would have a hard time seeing it's impacted the neighbors in the industrial zone. Right, that would be pretty hard sell, it's in the industrial zone, there's no residential allowed. But in the rural zone, everything's allowed, from sheep, from your little baby cows to people living there, houses. There's, there's things in the rural zone.
Lots of wetlands, lots of.
Well, they have to deal with all that store, all their, stormwater runoff, all their, all their parking, all of that, they would have to deal with. Rather than saying, they could say, oh, we could put. Rather than saying, they could say, oh, we could put this in, and this location is rural, but we haven't put any guidance, but our table does allow us to evaluate all these things and one of them is the impact to the neighbors.
If they're gonna build a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar store, they're gonna have to do some present preliminary engineering in a way. It's not like they're, they're not just gonna come and verbally.
If they, if they put together the two, three ring binders and drop them on our desk, I would be pretty shocked.
I would too. They'll have preliminary drawings, this is what we're thinking of, maybe gone to the board.
I, I hope they would, you know, I would think Don would know about it. We have that discussion, but I don't think there's trying to regulate that, to me, it, it puts us in a, in a tough spot because we would tell them what they would need. And I don't think, I, I don't feel comfortable feeling like I get everything. What would they need?
And we just went through that. What you're describing, we, that process.
That's happened many times sitting here. That's what, that's why we came up with the solar ordinance, because they were coming in with all these various packages. And we were like, ah, maybe we should tell them what to do. We haven't seen a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot facility, not even one.
I doubt if we will. One would be probably in ten years and I, I think it's better to.
Yeah, I don't think it's an immediate thing that would happen.
Yeah, it would be a process. They would come and.
Right. I, I get your point, Don. I just feel like I'm on the other side saying, I would rather not define it. Because by defining it, we have to define it right. And that's something that we're not gonna be able to do. Start looking at Portland and Bangor and Lewiston Auburn and looking at some of their resorts. And our towns are set up for that type of need for infrastructure and streetlights and all of that. Right? So that would be a very different kind of setup that we'd have to be thinking about.
Which in five towns and two states, so I feel like I could give you something to work with if you wanted to. I'm raising it as a question and you feel, you seem pretty clear that you don't. It seems like there's some concurrence. I just want to know what to do with it. If nothing, nothing.
I would, I would say for now, I just want to give you the sense from me, my perspective, I don't want to do anything. I think it's the wrong move for the town to do something with. That would be my fault.
Yeah. Again, if it's in the table, we can then limit where it could be. We have to do that.
It, it's already gonna be, it's, it's over twenty-five hundred, it's automatically.
It's automatic.
It has to be high. Anything over twenty-five hundred is high and it can only go in the village, industrial and rural area. That's it. So we've already done our job by building that table. That's why I feel like we're covered.
Yeah.
We've already done exactly that. There's no way they could argue that's medium because it says twenty-five hundred square feet. So they're already over that.
Yeah.
So retail is identified in the low impact. We don't have a definition. Do you want to define it since you're already referencing it?
Nope, we did it perfect. Because that, when I read that, and so by not defining it, it immediately means any retail business is in the medium or higher. They can't be in low because it says retail up to twenty-five hundred square feet, which implies, I'm a lawyer again, zero to twenty-five hundred. So if you're two square feet of retail, you are now in the medium category, period.
I'm not following you, I'm sorry.
So the way it reads on the table is it's very clear and it says up to twenty-five hundred.
It's in the definitions.
Yes, it's in the.
Retail sales with less than twenty-five hundred square feet of gross floor area.
But that's in the media.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, so what were you saying?
Is retail, retail sale with less than twenty-five hundred square feet. So if you have two square feet, you have less than twenty-five hundred, you are medium, which means you cannot be at low by definition. You have to be a medium. And if you're over twenty-five hundred, you're automatically in high.
And you're limited to where you can build, so we're covered, right?
Yeah, you're covered. And if it's small enough, we do allow it in those other zones because we have some of them. If it's a small enough retail place. So I feel like our ordinance is actually written correctly in this case.
What if you took high-impact commercial use and cause right now it's only not allowed in general residential and limited commercial?
It's only allowed, yeah, it's only allowed in industrial, village and rural.
So high-impact commercial use. Why don't we just allow, can't we just say that we only allowed it in general, commercial and industrial? And not allow it in village and rural? Well, general commercial. That would be like two oh two.
You wouldn't want to remove retail space from village.
High, high-impact though?
Yes, you take out every store in downtown Winthrop.
I'm going, okay.
Wrong way. No, that would be a bad choice. You'd say, no, you can't have any more commercial than.
Impact, okay.
You want to get it out of the room.
Well, I mean, that, that would be a different discussion, but again, I think rural should be allowed everywhere for that reason.
Well, well, no, you're right. It, it shouldn't, it should be allowed in, in village, but maybe not.
In industrial. That's it.
Medium impact?
No.
High impact, it's allowed in it's allowed in everything but limited and
General residential.
And general residential.
So it's a lot in general.
Right now, industrial, village and rural.
And rural.
Okay, so what, what do we want to do? I, I get solid at the table, but then it's a cloud of data. Is there a need for a definition? That's sorry, or that category, all. Retail business, do we need a definition or reference or?
I think we're covered without adding retail business. My vote would be to say remove it.
And then we, you need it.
Well, but I think we're already covered with our, I think we're already covered with our.
Very well, maybe. Well, this, you don't have a definition. This is the suggested definition.
I, I, I understand, but I'm saying we're already covered by our tables and our high, medium, low. We're already covered by retail space that's over twenty-five hundred square feet is automatically high and we're already limiting where it can be. And then we have the ability with our fourteen points in our ordinance to decide because it comes to us and we have the ability to decide. Now, we can vote on it and say, we don't want a Walmart and the appeal boards could appeal that.
I think it's a bad practice to leave it that open.
I'm sorry.
I've just been to court enough times, I just feel like it's bad practice to. You don't want to get so specific that you box yourself in, but you have to be able to give, the average person should be able to look at your ordinance and understand it. And the way it is now.
Your only recommendation is just maximizing the size.
No, that's just a question if you wanted to even contemplate that. So let's just take that out and just define, so you allow retail, but you don't define it. Do you want to, do you want it defined? Yeah, just the definition.
Well, we do have it in that, already in the tape, in the definitions, we have retail business, so that's fine. We already have it in a, it's in the definitions already, so we have to kind of leave it or it's good to leave it.
Take all of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was just example for discussion.
It's, it's covered now, right?
I, I do think maybe later we should consider high-impact, not in rural, but.
Alright, so, and then, are we okay with looking?
Like throwing that out there.
Well, we do call it retail sales. In the table, that we want to change that to retail sales instead of retail business.
Yes.
Just so they're consistent.
Sales, rental lease, yeah.
What, what is the actual word, retail?
In me, in medium impact, we wrote it as retail sales.
Okay, so the sale should be over there.
Okay.
That's it. Now, what about the table? You want the table referencing them?
Oh, up here?
Oh, you took it up. Okay, what's going on? You better take it up.
Yeah, some of these were just notes for purposes of discussion then, and so that was just note. I hear what you're saying, okay. Um, no definition of school.
Is that in the American ordinance? We specifically said, I thought we defined a school in the American. Because we talked about, you're right, yeah, I'm pretty sure we did.
But this is the zoning ordinance.
I understand, but I mean, maybe we should copy it from there. It's all I was saying.
Okay.
It's because we did define it in them and that was a lot of work to get it defined. And that's all I was saying is if we're, you know, I think that one, because it's in one of the other ordinance, well, again, this gets back to the whole circle, but we want to be consistent if nothing else.
Yep, okay, I'll do that. Again, this will be part of.
That's gonna be like the other one, we're gonna.
I'm gonna give you some information to.
Yeah, to, to see what the state uses and if we want to put whatever the state uses.
See, to me, that would be like someone that's gone through a treatment program and they're deemed.
Yeah. But I think, I think, I think we gotta know what's the state's defining these things as.
And then they would come to a place like they've got in your adventure.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna be very surprised at what they already.
It could be, if they are very specific and we're just not aware of it.
Let me put it all together in one place for you.
Yeah, hopefully they've got.
There's two, this is the zoning ordinance and this is the subdivision ordinance. This is just still when I was looking cross-referencing them, so there's nothing to do with that right now.
They're just not the same. But we need to update the subdivision ordinance anyway.
Yeah. Okay. That's just still already defined.
We're just trying to find a while. Some of those, some of that verbage is in the other definition we reviewed earlier.
Yeah. But what about the I guess it's commercial wireless services, unlicensed services. Specialized mole radio communications. That would, that wouldn't fall into someone's like ham radio, would it?
Ham radios, you do have to have a license to use them.
Yeah, and it is kind of a specialized. Well, I don't know if it's mobile though.
They have mobile ham radios now.
Do they?
Yeah. They're like walkie-talkies, but I don't think you need a license to use those.
Yeah, I don't think we need pager services probably. But you never know.
Pager services. Nineteen ninety-nine, just called my name.
Well, so you guys didn't have a chance to look at this in advance. I'll get this to you, you know, you'll see the changes that we made tonight and I'll give you some additional information and you can chew on it for the next meeting. It's an ongoing conversation. I feel like you went through a lot tonight.
Yeah.
That exists.
Then we want to define it. We want to be consistent, but I'm pretty sure we don't need like pager services.
Yeah, we can amend.
More common, more updated, serve more updated.
People still use pager services?
It does.
So like, I, yeah, like people in my industry, three, twenty-four-hour service.
Do you do pagers?
I didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah. As a HAZES communication in Winslow, they offer mobile mobile, uh, you know, like, uh, service reviews, but they're licensed, so the combination is what the locals say. They bought a license to operate those trucks and it has these, has these had a tower whose pace then so much facilitate their tower and their, so all the trucks can talk to each other. It's still a thing.
What would that be?
And they also offer wireless, they also offer pagers for the guys on call.
Did they do that for firefighters? What do they get? What's that annoying thing that makes noise when they're like?
Yeah, but it's not. It's not, that's not. Dispatch.
So.
That, our is that in the bounded block, right? So we're flipfired as that would.
You guys were really patient. It was a long meeting and I really appreciate you going through this with me. I feel like I can, that was the last one.
I think that, that kind of gives us like a good direction on like important things that we need to be working on though in the future, like.
Well, but I was, I'm planning to see if there's.
Yes.
That's right.
As you can see, you know, is there a big gap that we're missing? Is there something they've identified that we want?
Like, do they want a super warmer?
Well.
We have to read it.
That would be, that would be.
They want.
Yes, see what it is they want, but do we need ordinances for any of those things?
Right.
We talked about the subdivision ordinance and I don't know if there's any other ordinances we've talked about.
The road construction ordinance.
Right, so, um, so just throwing things, are we at a point where we want to kind of throw some things out there and say, what's next on our list? What's the highest priority? We don't want to take on three at the same time.
Right.
That's not good, because when we got the whole accessory dwelling structure in the middle didn't help us, we're doing other things, so.
You know, I made a table, I pulled all of the planning board, ones that are identified as planning board tasks that were short-term. But then when I was going through the table, those, those not all of those seemed like the ones that you'd want to do first. And so I'm not really sure what to do with that. No.
Okay. Somebody else did?
The committee.
Well, that's great. They can give us those and then we can re-prioritize. But at least, at least good to know what it is that they were asking. It's not, it's not that I want to throw out anything that they said. It's more just a question of understanding that they thought it was a high priority and maybe we could even go ask for clarification if
Yeah.
if there was something that jumped out at us, it's kind of like, you know, it's like, we need sidewalks everywhere, we need bike lanes, it's like.
So the next thing Anthony and the council will do is create a, um, implementation committee that will be like five to seven members and they will I don't know how often they'll meet, but they will check in with the different entities that are assigned tasks and probably help us do things like prioritize and take things out of order if necessary and, yeah.
Do we still have a council representative? Andy just wasn't able to.
It's his birthday today.
I was just asking, I wasn't.
But yes, he is still, yeah.
Still existed or?
Yeah, he's asked me a couple of times about participation and he had other priorities. And I shared him based on what we're doing, that okay, if you didn't balance it. I don't think he's assured, I don't think he's changed his role.
Okay.
No, I thought he would probably reach out to me and want to do stuff, but you know, all the stuff's on TV too, so if you could watch it or go back and watch a recording, so maybe he's just getting information from that.
Well, so, so. That's a cow.
Yeah, I've seen those online there, so.
Back to the jump, though. I dropped through definitions, correct?
We went through definitions, um.
The used table.
The used table, well, a lot of what you've said tonight, I guess what I would like to do is take some of the things that in my mind, so someone's gonna come to me and Mark and say, where can I do this? Where, you know, I'm gonna do this in this place, is that allowable? So some of it still seems a little bit greedy to me as to how that applies. So I guess I want to go through some of the things in my mind that I could see coming down the pike and check in and make sure that we're on the same page. I don't want to, you know, of course, ultimately it will be up to you guys because the application would come to you, but I don't want to give preliminary direction to someone that's incorrect. So I think I'll just want to check in on some of those things with you. No, I think we're good tonight.
For sure.
Last meeting, we made a change, is they were very agree. And it's been bugging me ever since my ride home that night, so we in a seven minutes she brought sign, but this, it's not in the minutes, it's the table. But basically we had minimum lot size. So in the past, it had been suggested that a minimum lot size without sewer be forty, 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 you know, consistent across the board. And at the last meeting, we decided not to do that. But we still eliminated the with sewer column. Which massively impacts anybody that's in those circumstances.
That's obvious, yeah.
So if you had you had a lot, say on Memorial Drive, a one acre build of a lot with sewer and water, what we just did made that lot go from a quarter of a million dollars to worth. I was, if I was an owner, I would be experiencing that. I think, I, I didn't see it in those terms, and we've made that suggestion, but I think it's a huge impact that we should we didn't.
Well, I guess I would, I would suppose based on that, that since we didn't make any changes to the lot sizes, we have to leave with and without sewer. Because I think that is unintended consequences. I did not think about.
I didn't say I couldn't have either until I come right home, I'm like, Stan, you need to talk about that again before we.
Yeah, I'll, I can make a motion that, um, we're going to restore the with sewer, uh, column to table three.
So both column.
Both, both columns will exist and the sizes will go back to the.
They change it back to the original.
Uh, which were the original size. Uh, which were the original size.
Not hear that on the Zoom.
But we didn't change the column, column, let's call it B and C. We did not make any changes to those.
So much. Good job, guys. I didn't catch that on Zoom last time. I thought you changed the lot sizes. Proud of you not changing them.
But you and Brent were.
Favor? Excuse me, did I discuss? All favor?
Did you vote, Betty? Oh, okay.
I couldn't hear anything on the Zoom. It's like not worth zooming in if you can't. So hard to hear.
Jim's still here. Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman, Jim is still here according to this, do we?
Jim, you still there?
Just wanted to get his vote.
Jim?
Catch.
Something must have happened.
I thought we changed everything. I was confused.
All right, I'm just gonna put him as abstaining in this instance.
Never gonna zoom in ever again because I couldn't hear, kept dropping the whole time.
Thank you.
It's hard.
Um, so other buildings?
Uh, I'll just let you know that there's one application that came in today for the next meeting. So, and then one that missed the deadline, so that'll be on the next one with whatever else comes along. So your next meeting. You'll have time to continue these discussions with, and then that one application.
And that's the eleventh, right?
Correct.
Okay. New Jersey, no, I'll be back by then.
Was your longest component?
Yeah, so the second one, we have, we'll have at least one, maybe more, but the first one, we just have one.
Okay, on that line, that next meeting, that's a public hearing on the.
I have to check with Deb and make sure that we can get it noticed for that.
What the word is next? Which is last one.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll check with her first thing in the morning.
Well, we got at least one application next time. Right?
Correct.
What does that involve? Remember? The other thing is.
I can't recall, I apologize.
And do we have any to do with the ordinance? Either we have an order and we don't, we don't know what.
We're not sure if it's gonna be that, yeah, I'm gonna guess it's gonna be the second meeting.
I guess true.
Yeah.
What?
And will we get the.
I will get that for your, in your next packets. A copy for each of you.
Okay, so relative to the, the destruction we had tonight. That's another job that I mean.
Uh, we can continue that, uh. The next meeting.
I mean, would it be a good goal to clean that next week?
I think it'll be a great goal.
Yeah. So we, we did that and approved it, we incorporate that into that public hearing?
I don't think so, because. Yeah.
Okay. Um. The tables. Used tables.
We didn't change anything.
Okay, there.
We're okay there. Um, so I'll give you the comprehensive plan for the next packet. You'll have that before the next meeting and it has the tables in there with delegating. The different tasks to who and priority, um. But the subdivision, um. Ordinance is in there and that keeps coming back and that might be one you wanna contemplate and I did type it up for you and I handed it up for the last meeting, so the format's ready to start changing when you're ready.
Do you want to? Was the, uh.
Oh, groundwater. Water Protection District.
Which deals with. And and you would propose eliminating that because incorporating to the ordinance. There's still items needed, so, but I don't think we've acted.
Yeah, I don't think we have either it's small enough that, but we, we need to get the digital maps approved and finalized first. Then we can start.
Um, it's gonna be on the agenda for the ninth for the council. I had gone to a previous meeting and they were not comfortable with the maps and I have to, um. Give them more information to make them comfortable that it's always field verified. It's always the text, it's always field verified because they were looking at the maps. And had some concerns about what, what was on there. Yes.
Oh, let's tell them we put that on the agenda. I don't need the big, that's on a big.
You know, give it the stamp of approval, yeah. Okay. But I think that needs to be addressed first, how that becomes our final product, right? Digital product is now our product. Now we can start, try to start talking about, do we wanna clean that up?
So there's two activities for next three years. If indeed they do approve it, then.
Then we can discuss removing it, so.
Yeah.
Because it was put in place for the super plan, right? But this doesn't make sense.
Any other mission? What about the Pugger Legion, Jamie?
I should totally say the pledge of allegiance.
Motion?
You just haven't been, yeah.
Just like occasionally or?
Before we start a meeting?
It's in our policy and procedures, we just haven't.
What we're supposed to do on live, like I can't just do it in the car?
You can stand up.
So I, I hear agreement on doing that. Okay. So that'll be on the first body agenda. No, sleeping, no. Any other item?
Yeah, I asked this earlier and I lost the, what the result was. We talked about. Um, storage facilities. And where they're allowed that whole low, medium and high. Was there? Did that just land on whatever the table says or was there any input on, man, we don't really want them in a certain district? I don't recall.
That's a good, that's a good. And and say, let's have a discussion, let's see what the conflict wants. We probably should go through any use we can think about and say. Cause we could define that and say, the storage facilities are defined as medi- medium commercial and then we could go to the table. You know, we can specifically define what it's gonna match up with and that would limit where you could put them. So if we wanted to go that more high or whatever we wanted. I like the low, medium, high. I know Dawn doesn't, but I'm a fix low, medium, high because.
This is my fear. Someone's gonna come in and say they wanna do this and I'm gonna go, oh. If it's too gray.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna check in with you some more.
Right, bring it in front of us and we will try to give you that guidance to say, based on our review, but this is what it would be, low, medium or hot. And based on that, this is what their limitations are. So if that made it easier, you could bring that to us just as a simple question and we would, and give us a. Thirty second briefing of what they were requesting. They wouldn't even have to be here for that.
Yeah.
It's just you saying, hey, to the board, I'd like to ask, I had this come in, this is what's going on. And it'd be a public, you know, request. To say this is something that they requested. Is to help us define that and we might need more information. That's the bottom line. We might say, you know, based on that, we're not gonna approve it, we're just saying what level we would put it into, which then may limit what zone they can put it into.
I would suggest moving forward somehow, I'm not providing any language or where it would go, but. Um, requiring a medium or high intensity, um, use application, it might be good to require a sketch, a preliminary. Before they. Invest themselves in the engineering and the soft costs, because you, it's hard to get them to back out then if they come in.
Right, well, that, that's the thing is, I mean, I think what we saw of the ropers was what we should see for more applicants. Is we're gonna come in with some ideas, some thoughts, see what, you know, something we can see. Something we can feel, but not the full detailed engineer, the all of the investment, all of the, they've gone so far down the road, they're like, whoa, um. X number of dollars in, they don't wanna back out and then they feel like they wanna fight the town. It's like this should be a collaborative effort, not a combative effort. That would be, when, you know, that would be your first line of defense to work on that and say, that's the way this board likes to operate. In a collaborative effort, because we wanna incorporate whatever we can, but we gotta hear about. Um, you know, we wanna have that discussion with them ahead of time. So that we'll know what we're going into.
A public input at that level too, because you don't know what they're gonna bring to the table and, yeah. I, I think I'm.
Make a motion that we.
All favor?
Thank you all very much.
Good evening.
You know, you can always.
Yeah, I think that's what we wrote.
It is, yeah. I like that. And you can limit it too. I mean, at any point with the workshop.
If it's eight fifty.
Just that when you get cranking, it feels good to, I know.
Well, if it takes.
Thank you all.
I forget anything, I think I'm then.
Oh, wait, let me get your. No, I don't know who those belong to. Do these ones you don't? Oh, they do. Where, where were those? They were here. I thought they were his.
No, they weren't mine.
Sounds like.
I'd have thought they were mine, it just stacks way too big for anything I bring here. I put mine in this thing.
I know when I was looking, I, there are definitions and stuff, I was people all that, right? We did it one point before. Yeah, we didn't have that one. I just wanted the old one, just to make it so. But that's, yes. Do you think I could find one of them?
I'm gonna see if she can. Bring me a copy of the. Ordinance as it is now. I can't work that off.
Okay.
Here's some more garbage.
Recycle?
Recycle.
Oh.
Did everyone else get their, get their note made?
No one else, no one said anything. So I sent that and I didn't get a response.
Oh, there's a couple of things on my email and I wonder if that was, if that isn't one of them like. I didn't get it. Cause people sent me, oh, it's two days ago. You did.
Well, when I get stuff. From Dawn, I have to put it right in a folder. Because I'll get two hundred and some. And I just click the button, I go down, I unclick the ones I wanna keep, but sometimes I miss it. Then I gotta go search.
Yes.
Usually I'll remember and I'll search for them, but.
Didn't, if I did get it, I did exactly what you said.